Would you call the row, please?
Robert Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Cavan.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approved amendments of the regular city council meeting held January 20, 2015. Item B, approved in agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Energy Management for Emergency Management Performance Grant Program funds, excuse me, in the amount of $25,000 for the 2015 EMPG program. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $3,82,930.80.
Make the motion to approve the items on the consent docket.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is receive a presentation from staff regarding the status of community development grant disaster relief funds and the National Disaster Resilience Competition, NDRC, grant program.
Okay. Well, thank you. The city manager asked me to give you guys an update on what's been going on for the past 18 months. So let's go back in time, if we can, to about May 21, 2013. The local Oklahoma City HUD office, of course, saw the disaster. Many or some of their employees were actually residents of Moore and experienced it. The HUD office knew that there was disaster recovery funds out there to be had, and they knew that it would be very beneficial for us for disaster recovery. So they immediately began discussions with city staff, our elected officials such as Tom Cole, and really just had an education experience with staff about what these funds could mean. And then they didn't, they hired a team of consultants to come in to look at the disaster and to see what our unmet needs were. They spent a lot of time on it and a lot of their funds paying for these consultants. And, there it goes. Okay. And it paid off. Everyone's hard work did pay off. We were able to receive the first allocation of $26.3 million December 16, 2013. And then subsequently, we received $25.9 million on June 3, 2014. There are just, actually, there's many rules to these monies, but there's two basic rules that we have to keep in mind when we're talking about it at a high level. 51% of the funds has to benefit low to moderate income persons. And secondly, all money must be spent by September 2019. So these are the two rules that we're constrained by whenever we start looking at certain projects to do. There it goes. So in order to allocate these funds to different areas, we pass action plans. And we did, we have passed now one action plan. And in order to update it for the second round, we did an amendment to the action plan. Once we, once we do a partial action plan, it really reserves the funding for those areas that we request for two years. And we have two years to spend those funds. So obviously, we don't want to request all $52.2 million at one time because we couldn't spend that in two years. So we're going to HUD in small increments to request that funding for certain areas. So where do we stand on these projects? We've actually been quite busy doing work. And really, for the first two years, our focus is, has been on planning. It becomes a basis for spending our disaster recovery funds and asking for more money in the future. We did contract with Cardinal Engineering to perform an infrastructure recovery and implementation plan, and we're calling that the I-RIP. It began last July, and it systematically evaluates the condition of all of our infrastructure within the tornado area. It then provides a list of needed repairs, and also identifies areas where neighborhood quality of life improvements can be made. This is something that we've never done before in the city of Moore, and frankly, we've never had the funds to do something like this. So it's very exciting. We have had just terrific citizen turnout in our public meetings for this. We've had six meetings now with the public, and they've all, pretty much all been very highly attended, and people are very excited. We currently have a visual preference survey that we are requesting citizens to take. It is online. We will be taking the results from that survey until February 23. That's the deadline. This plan will be wrapping up in March, and I'm not going to say much more about it because I think we're going to have an entire different presentation whenever it's done. So I'll save that surprise for you when it comes. The second planning project we have is a I-35 Hazard Mitigation Wall. This is a pilot project for HUD. They've never actually done anything like this before. And it's interesting to see how many times they've dealt with tornadoes versus hurricanes, and their experience on tornadoes is somewhat limited. So they're looking for some innovative ideas for tornado disasters, and this seemed to really hit on their, on their interest. The wall will be built to withstand 135 mile per hour wind speeds. It's to protect the neighborhood against a variety of hazards. Noise and light intrusion from the interstate, a lot of security issues with having your backyard back up to an interstate, and then, of course, blowing debris from the interstate, whether it's just a normal Oklahoma windy day or you have just one of the smaller tornadoes. Contrary to recent news media, this is not meant to prevent a tornado. We understand that tornadoes cannot be prevented by a wall. This is really just to provide an added layer of protection for these residents whenever a small tornado comes up to an F3. We did have our first public meeting on this project on January 22. It again was well attended. We had a lot of great questions and comments from the, from the neighbors. And the contractor, our consultant Poe and Associates, is currently finishing the survey work on this project. And so it's still in, in the planning phases. We do have several upcoming planning projects that we haven't started on yet, but they are in our queue. All of these projects are connected to the tornado, and they will be invaluable for future growth as a city and also to help the city recover from the tornado. The other part, major part of the disaster recovery funds is how we address our housing needs. Because the funds are given to us by HUD, which specializes in housing, they did want to, they were highly interested in making sure that we have enough of quality, affordable housing after the tornado for our residents. And so because of that, housing is a very large component of this grant. Approximately half of our funds will be used for housing. And the lion's share of that, those funds will be used for a potential redevelopment project on the corner of Southwest 17th and Janeway. I think most of you are aware of that. That is an ongoing project. We have, we have, have the review appraisal that is currently ongoing. It should be complete in about 30 days. At that time, we'll be able to discuss the appraisals with the property owners and come to hopefully an agreement on price. We do have a Phase One environmental review complete on the property, so that is also moving. And we do have a request for proposals out on the street today for consultants to propose some master planning for that, for that area. So I think that within 45 to 60 days, we're going to see a lot of activity on that particular project. Housing rehab is another, is another part of this money. We will, it is two years after the event. O-Drip has been providing assistance to tornado victims ever since the tornado, and frankly, they have received few requests for housing rehab. We are really not expecting a lot of demand on this particular project, but within the next couple of months, we will be starting to advertise this for our residents to see if there is a demand. And we do have a contract or an agreement with the city of Oklahoma City for using some of their resources to assist us in this program. So we will also be reevaluating our needs here in the near future after we get, get our results back from the demand of the housing rehabilitation project. We will see a possible transition to down payment assistance for the tornado area to move tornado lots. It's come to our attention that some of the rebuilds are just not going as quickly as possible. We have about 600 vacant lots still left in the tornado area, which to us is far too many. So we really want to incentivize people to come back to the area and to rebuild on those lots. For the city, of course, a house is always preferable to an empty lot for a variety of different reasons. The infrastructure portion of the grant funding is what most people connect with the CBG DR funds. That's probably what most people is more comfortable with and would expect to see. Through the I-RIP development, we have identified several needed projects to begin on immediately. We are focusing on a low to moderate income area west of Telephone Road for street repair and waterline rehab work. And then we are also going to be focusing around the Plaza Towers Elementary area. We are expecting these projects to begin mid-February, so we are gearing up for that. The second part of this discussion is about the National Disaster Resilience Competition Grant, or the NDRC as we call it. This is an offshoot of the CBG DR funding, and it focuses on resiliency and innovation. And it's exactly what it says it is. It's a competitive grant that we will be competing with all different sized cities in all different states across the United States. We have met with HUD and the Rockefeller Foundation on several different occasions to discuss our possible projects for this funding, and they are encouraging us to think big. And by big, I mean really, really big. There is a total of $1 billion to give out. They are not sure how many municipalities or states will apply for the funding, and it is highly likely that if we submit a good application, we will be funded regardless of what the amount is. So they're encouraging us to really think big, be innovative, and think outside the box. And so in order to help us do that, the Rockefeller Foundation has sponsored some grant workshops that Jared and I attended in January, and it was very beneficial. The main issues that came up for some possibilities for a grant application were to deal with a tornado, obviously, but then also drought that's been ongoing and water independence. So they're very, they're very excited about the kind of application that we can put forward, and they really want to see us succeed, which is exciting. So finally, I just kind of wanted to give you an overview of what all of this work means. We're, we're very busy. The program has four workers. We have three full-time and one part-time. The one part-time is me. And we've done a lot in these past 18 months. All of the projects that we've already talked about is things that we've been working on. In addition, we've been working on processes and procedures that HUD requires us to have, which are difficult to come up with if you've really never done them before. We've been to a lot of education classes, courses, and just being educated from our consultants and ourselves, reading the Federal Register. We've been working a lot on payroll and duplication of benefit. A lot of work has been going on behind the scenes. As we move from the planning phase to the construction phase, we're going to be even busier than we have been. And that's where we came up with the need for some additional staffing from last meeting. We, like I said before, we are going to be starting on infrastructure projects in mid-February. And let me just kind of give this into a perspective for you. In order for us to spend all of this money by September 2019, we have to spend over $1 million a month. And that's something that we have never had to do before. So we can absolutely do it. We ran the numbers on what it costs to repair our infrastructure and all the damage we have from the tornado and the cleanup. We can do it. It's not a problem, but it's just different from how we've ever operated before. We did complete our first drawdown in January. That was for a little bit over $250,000. It is being processed, and we will receive reimbursement any day for this. So things are moving along smoothly, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have a couple of 2019 dates. The funds need to be spent, this need to be allocated by that date, or the projects need to be completed?
My understanding is that they need to be encumbered. So they, basically, we have to pull a purchase order for the money, the projects. And so we basically have to spend, I mean, don't have to spend every cent, but we have to have a purchase order.
And the, just some of the questions that I get, that the city has been, you know, a lot of monies to HUD, and we haven't seen a lot of that being spent yet, but you kind of explain just now why that is? Because a lot of what you guys have been doing is getting us ready for all the expenditures and improvements.
That's exactly right, right.
A lot's been happening, we just haven't necessarily seen.
Right, but, but you're fixing to. So, and that's probably the key thing to remember, is that mid-February, we're going to start, and we're not going to stop. I mean, literally, we will not stop until September 2019. We can't. We've got a lot of money to spend.
And does the, the funding, does it have to be spent, is it designated for the tornado area or can it be citywide?
Yes, the tornado area. Since this was a disaster recovery grant, it does have to be spent on disaster recovery. We had the relatively small amount that we set aside for planning, which can be used all over the city for planning purposes. But the actual improvements have to be spent in the tornado area.
Go ahead.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, item number four is consider approval of a contract with Crawford and Associates for Finance Department in special projects.
Mayor and Council, this agenda item is seeking your approval for us to enter into an agreement with a local CPA firm to assist us in various projects for the Finance Department. As we assessed some of the large items that's coming up, in particular, our software conversion and the HUD grant, what's required of us pertaining to these large projects, we felt like that we needed some additional help in the Finance Department. We don't believe it's to the level of hiring additional staff, but we believe that if we had specialized help that could come in with the, on these projects as needed, that would be the best approach. So that's, that's what we're requesting tonight. The Assistant Finance Director is going to be reassigned to be the project manager for the software conversion, implementation, and training, which will run for a considerable amount of time, probably two years. That's our timeframe on the software conversion. So with significant amount of her time being devoted to the software, feel like we need a little additional help for some of the accounting, the day-to-day accounting work that's, that's done. So that's what this item is requesting your approval for.
So I, I would assume this is more like how you're going to work this into a budget item on this HUD money, because to encumber it without having a funding source or the funds in, in place, that's pretty tough to do. It's actually against state law.
Right, right.
So.
The funds would be available, you know, once, once you approve it, once, once Council approves the, the item, and it would come from our contingency funds, our, our general fund, general government funds.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, make the vote. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is consider approval of a contract with Dillon and Associates for auditing services for fiscal year ended June 30, 2015.
Mayor and Council, it's time that we enter into an agreement with our auditor for auditing services for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2015. Dillon and Associates has been our auditor for a number of years. He provides great service for us, and he turns around the audit reports in a very timely manner. The fee that he's quoted us for this year is $72,500, which is an increase over the last year. The primary reason for that is the HUD grant. There's additional work that he'll have to do and perform for the audit. And just in general, the city's budget is growing. There's more funds and more complexity than ever before, and so it requires more audit work to review all of that. So staff recommendation is to approve the agreement with Dillon and Associates for auditing services.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion on this one?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this side? So you guys are happy with them, right?
Yes, they're a very good auditing firm.
Okay. Would you call for the vote?
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider awarding RFP number 1415-004, purchase and installation of a playground at Cottonwood Park to play well in the amount of $50,000.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the, the current playground equipment at Cottonwood exists of four swings, one slide. It's about 15 years old. This and the next item on your agenda are two oldest playgrounds. The process to select the playground that we're going to recommend was, we had a committee of city staff, some parks board members. They evaluated some proposals by four companies. The budget that we put with this project was $50,000. As we've done with our other playgrounds that you've replaced and funded over the last few years, is we assign a theme to the playground. This is a construction-themed playground. Hopefully, you can see it in your renderings in your agenda packet. The source of funding for this project is the Parks Quarter Cent Sales Tax. This is a budgeted item through that, through those, through that project. Our recommendation is that you award this to PlayWell. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay.
Is Cottonwood Park, Cottonwood Park where is that?
It's at 1028 Southwest Second. Councilmember Hammond, it's north of Fourth Street, just east of Santa Fe.
North of the neighborhood?
Yeah, it's a real small park. It's about one acre in size. And I would add also that this playground and all of our new ones add significant play value and are significant upgrades that would exist in playgrounds. A lot of shade, more slides, and a lot better playgrounds. So we think it's a great addition for the neighborhood.
Move to approve. All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Would you call the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider awarding RFP number 1415-006, purchase and installation of a playground at Greenbrier Park to Game Time in the amount of $70,000.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, same type of playground is at Greenbrier's was at Cottonwood. The process was the same. The budget for this playground is $70,000. It's a little bit bigger park, so it can afford a little bit bigger playground. The theme for this is a dinosaur theme, and again, hopefully, you can make that out in your, in your agenda packet. The quarter cent park sales tax will fund this. This is a budgeted item and one that we promoted to the voters. So we'd recommend that you award this to Game Time.
Tom, is there a reason we're using two different companies for both parks, or?
Yeah, through the evaluation process, we just felt like that this playground, by this company, was a better design, better, better value. Yep.
So you've been very able to put any input on those people live around there right now, that if they were to attend a park or meeting?
We can. We haven't done that before. We, and we didn't on these. We haven't on, this is our fifth and sixth playground that we've done. We really haven't done that.
Well, it was great.
Thank you.
You told me you were happy with whatever was there.
I got a whole lot of nice feedback on the one that we did over behind Station Two. That has been incredibly used, and I don't think there was ever a park over there anyway.
Yeah.
Some people really do appreciate it.
Yeah, the one at Palmer's has been a huge success.
Yes.
And, and Councilmember Hammond, just, excuse me, Mayor, on that one at Palmer's, we did solicit, we went to Kelly Elementary, and the school kids voted on various things. So we, on that one, we did.
Correct. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this side? No? Would you call for it, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider renewal of a contract with US Lawns of Oklahoma City South for mowing of selected city property.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is just a renewal of a contract that we have with US Lawns. They mow some of our islands, our right-ofways, and other properties throughout the city. We've used them, I believe, three years, and this is a one-year renewal. They've done a great job for us. Lane and Janine and their staff do a wonderful job. We're very happy with them and their, and their workers. They're more business, they're located here, so we'd recommend that you, that you would award this to them. And I would mention that there's no additional funds associated with this, it's just a renewal of a contract, so no budgetary impact.
All right, thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Do appreciate the job you guys do. And, because we had this, a long time ago, nobody ever showed up to mow them. And even though we've been it out, we get a new guy, and he worked for about six weeks, and that was it. So appreciate you guys doing that. Okay. Item number nine is consider approval of a lot split located within the southwest quarter of Section 29 Township 10 North, range 2 West being north of Southeast 34th Street and east of Sunny Lane. Application by Kent Davidson.
Mayor and Council, this property is Zoned A2, suburban agriculture. It is located just north of Southeast 34th Street and west of Sunny Lane. The applicant is requesting three lots on a total of seven acres. Private water and sewer will serve the properties, and access is proposed from Windmill Road that is in the Falls neighborhood. This does meet all of the requirements for lot splits and A2 zoning and staff recommends approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, sir, you said it did meet approval?
It, it did meet all of the requirements, yes.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this side? Anybody? Anybody opposed? I guess that's on time. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider, yeah, item number 10 is consider the final plat of Plaza Terrace, Section 2, a replat of Bonnie Bray Edition, blocks 11 through 15, located in the southeast quarter of Section 22, Township 10 North, range three west, north of Southwest 19th Street and west of Telephone Road. Application by Bonnie Bray LLC, Jay Evans. Planning Commission recommend approval of this item, 7-0.
Mayor and council, this property was Zoned R3 as a PUD. This was a redevelopment project resulting from the May 20th, 2013 tornado. The overall project consists of duplexes, triplexes, and fiveplexes on a total of 12.5 acres. This is a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre. The second phase of this development, which is what we're considering tonight, consists of 89 units, three duplex lots along the west side of McAlpine Avenue, 11 triplex and 10 fiveplex lots on Southwest 13th and 14th Streets, abutting the developing I-35 West Apartments to the south and the closed Royal Mobile Home Park to the, Mobile Home Park to the east. The applicant will be utilizing the existing public streets and water lines. Southwest 13th Street will have a cul-de-sac placed on the east end, and the applicant will be responsible for extending public sewer lines to the lot. There is no FEMA floodplain located on this site. The final plat differs from the approved PUD number 906 by creating lots for unit ownership for the triplex and fiveplex units as opposed to buildings being under one ownership for rental units. The city does support this change because it will increase housing options for home ownership, but we do recognize that the neighborhood covenants and restrictions will be of primary importance to ensure the long-term viability of the project. Those neighborhood covenants and restrictions will establish aesthetic continuity requirements on the attached units for things such as paint color, roofing, fencing materials, and the general maintenance. But staff does recommend approval of this final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How does this work in the HUD plan? Because that's all the HUD area out there.
Right, this will be adjacent to the HUD area. We will not be spending any HUD funds on this project, but it'll just be a new nice development that's adjacent to hopefully what will become the city's new nice development.
Okay. So it's not a HUD project?
It is not a HUD project, no.
Okay, thanks. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? It's a big item, nobody's got a thought on it.
Terry Cavanagh?
Epstein.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thanks for bringing the development to more. Item number 11 is consider approval of an agreement with Signal Systems Management Incorporated to install and monitor trafficware ATMS controllers on the existing traffic signals along Southwest 19th Street between Santa Fe and Tower Drive.
Mayor and council, as you all are certainly aware of, Southwest 19th Street and the vicinity of Tower Drive, really all the way west to the city limits to Santa Fe is one of our areas of concern with regard to traffic. We've done quite a bit of improvement out there over time. Still additional construction and improvement to be made out there, but in discussions with TEC, our traffic consultants, traffic engineers, they have recommended a system to us that would, they would install on our traffic signals. Michael Hoffner is here to give you a little bit more technical understanding of what we're talking about, but it's a system that'll tie all these traffic signals together and hopefully make them function even better than they are, or much better hopefully than they are now. Michael, if you'll tell us.
Sure. Again, my name is Michael Hoffner. I'm with Signal System Management, and we are a sister company of TEC who, as Mr. Edie has alluded to, we do a lot of work here in the city more, within the city of Oklahoma City regionally and also in neighboring states as well. The item up for approval is, is for the installation of new traffic signal controllers from Santa Fe to Tower Drive with the installation of cellular communication equipment in each of the existing traffic signal cabinets. The, this contract will provide state-of-the-art equipment with the latest firmware on the traffic signal controllers, the communication equipment, new coordinated traffic signal timing plans along the corridor from Santa Fe to Tower, the connection of the traffic signal controllers to a central management system, and on-call services for the length of the contract and timing plans as needed due to special events or, for instance, Black Friday or holidays. Some of the benefits to having these traffic signal controllers connected to a central software system will be updated time clocks, which time clocks in the traffic signal controllers are what maintain the coordination between an intersection. And with the closely spaced intersections on, along this corridor, just a drift of one, two, three seconds between time clocks can make a significant difference in progression through the corridor. Some of the existing equipment out there, we'll go out there on a monthly basis and oftentimes find them five to 10 minutes off from one another, and that's even between Riverwalk and Telephone. And as you can imagine, that can make a pretty significant difference in the progression along that corridor. Some of the additional benefits that you can receive from having these traffic signal controllers connected to the central software system is backup, backup of all data that's in those traffic signal controllers. If a traffic signal controller goes down for any reason, stops working, gets hit by a vehicle, a new controller can be installed out there, we'll be able to connect to it through the IP address and dump all the data that was already on the other traffic signal controller on there and have it up and running in just a matter of minutes essentially. I mean, once the controller's out there installed in the cabinet, ready to go. A record of all historical data in the traffic controller will be maintained as well. You can go back to a specific time, a day, or a week, or a month, and monitor if you have a citizen complaint that may be a, an approach that's not getting serviced. You can go back and see maybe what has been going on, if there's a detector out, a detector issue. You can help troubleshoot some of those issues before a contractor may have to go out there. In the instance today, we'd probably just send a contractor out there to try to troubleshoot, and this would be looking from, from an internal standpoint, so we can arm the contractor with specific information for what he may need to be troubleshooting in the field. Alarms can also be programmed to send alerts when, for instance, a detection is out, or if a signal goes into flash for a reason, and a variety of other things. The maintenance, the maintenance expenses will be minimized from what they are today because you won't have to maintain any type of communication system. There is a little bit of communication out there today, which kind of consists of copper wire on the ground between some of the intersections and some wireless radio communication between a couple others. And it's, it's been spotty at best, especially with the new construction along the east side of I-35. Those, it's difficult to keep those copper lines in the ground from being cut, and, as well as with the copper lines that were out west of Telephone Road with all the construction that was going on in the past up there and today as well. The initial capital outlay is very low considering the system that this will be operating on, and also you'll, you'll have the expertise to operate the system and basically an on-call contract for traffic signal timing for the length of this contract. That's just a quick overview of some of the benefits that this will provide. I'd be happy to expand on any portion of it if you have any additional questions.
Anything we can do to help would be awesome.
Yes. Absolutely.
The great thing about this is that they'll have real-time or virtually real-time picture of what's going on, on Michael's laptop. He gave us a demo one day of another Oklahoma City's.
Oklahoma City runs the system as well.
Runs his system, and he pulled up what was going on at 63rd and May at that moment with regard to the traffic signals, and literally could look and see what's going on there.
Correct.
And probably to Michael's detriment, but to our benefit, he lives here in town and goes through those intersections out there every day, so he will be able to, he has helped us tremendously in that regard, but he'll be able to be in it as well as looking at it from kind of a 30,000-foot view as well with the system.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? Can we put a traffic camera up there and take pictures of people that run the light? That would be great, because every, every time it changes, you have two that goes through it.
We send our, we send our police officers out there on the motors fairly frequently to try to discourage that, but we've not crossed that bridge with regard to the traffic cameras at this point.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item number 12 is consider authorizing two full-time and one part-time position for janitorial services at the community center, the More Public Library, and the Branch Senior Center, and approve the termination of a cleaning contract with the Oklahoma Building Services and.
Mayor, we, as you all know, contacted with a local company for building maintenance, sort of on a trial basis really, at the community center, the library, and the branch center. I think we've had that contract for close to a year, some number of months, I believe. And really, from, from pretty early on, I began to hear reports that there was concern about the cleaning work that was going on and some other issues out there. We, we wanted to see if this would work for us, but at this point, we are now convinced that we need to go ahead and, and do this work ourselves. This agenda item says two full-time and one part-time. That's the amount of workers that, that they tell me that it'll take, our own employees. One of these positions is already in the budget of current full-time position, so if you authorize this tonight, it'll be authorizing actually one new full-time position and one part-time position for this. But it seems to be unanimous from the library folks and people at the community center and the branch center that they would like to go back to the, our employees doing this and that we have control of the timing and quality.
Did you hand them the room and tell them to get with it?
I didn't directly, no.
Oh, okay. Just curious. All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 13 is consider a renewable contract for a pyrotechnic production in the amount of $45,000 with Extreme Pyrotechnics.
Mayor and council, the Parks and Recreation Staff requested quotes from five different companies for pyrotechnic companies, and only two replied. This amount is $5,000 more than last year's show. It won't be any longer, but there'll be more shells inside the show. Staff would like to recommend Extreme Pyrotechnics as the lowest and most responsible bid. We've used this company for several years.
Did they put you up to this because it comes out of your budget instead of theirs? Oh, you didn't know that, did you? New team. Just kidding you. Do we have a motion?
I'd be, I'd be curious, have we ever looked at the possibility of seeking for businesses or, did somebody be interested in sponsoring something like this?
First year or two, didn't we do that?
We did that. We didn't have a very good show.
We did try. First couple of years, we had problems.
Several years ago, it was completely funded by volunteers or individuals or fundraising, and the city really wasn't involved in it too much, and it.
It was about a three-minute show.
It went away as far as the funding. The city took it over. We, we've not directly gone out and solicited donations or whatever for this. It's not something we would be opposed to. It's just, I think we kind of had the feeling maybe that we didn't know whether our local businesses would want to see their money shot up in the air or anything, but.
Well, we're shooting somebody's money, so.
Well, true. All of our folks' money in the air, our taxpayers.
Well, it's always a great show.
Probably not as best PR as we do.
Certainly it brings the most people to town. I mean, there's no doubt about that. That's our busiest day with bringing folks in to town, and we always get very good feedback from our citizens about the show.
Is this the same company we used last year?
Same company. We've used for several years.
I thought it was.
It was a great show last year.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So move.
All right, thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thanks, too. Item 14 is discuss and consider authorizing staff to negotiate a lease with Branch Communications LLC to erect a 150-foot monopole tower at 400 North Telephone Road and to remove the existing water tower at said location.
Mayor, just a little bit of, and council, just a little bit of history on this. The water tower over there, as you know, has been here many years. I think Robert tells me it was built in about '61. It's been out of, out of service as far as the water system for a number of years, quite a number of years now. Several years ago, and I don't remember exactly when it was, but we entered into a contract with, I think it was Southwestern Bell at the time, but with AT&amp;T now. AT&amp;T currently has antennas for their cellular system on the tower. AT&amp;T approached us fairly recently and indicated they would like to upgrade that and to extend the lease on the tower. And when we began to talk to them about that, we sort of began to talk internally about whether we wanted that tower to stay or not. If it's, it does have probably a little bit of nostalgic feel to it or whatever, and it, it does say more when you go by, but if we leave it up there, we're going to have to spend a lot of money on it to get it repainted. So really, I think our options are to, our best course of action is to probably go ahead and have it taken down. But secondary part of this then is that if we do that, AT&amp;T and others perhaps who want to be on there or around that side wouldn't have a location. So Branch Communications, this entity that's came to us as, I guess they were having discussions with AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T with a proposal to put up a monopole tower, which is just a tall, single tower over there at that location in lieu of the water tower, and then they would have, potentially have several different cell phone services on the tower. And so we've had discussions with these Branch Communications, and they've made a preliminary proposal to us, but I didn't want to go too far with it in terms of that until you all made the decisions in terms of the tower itself. If the tower's going to stay, then we don't necessarily need to do the monopole situation.
Was it going to cost you to take the tower down?
Do you have any idea on that, Robert, what it would take to take the tower down?
To take it down, the payment was $170,000.
I would imagine, you know, $20,000, $40,000 to take it down, something like that.
How tall is the water tower?
It's about 120 feet.
Do you think the, one of the Branch Communications or whomever would be interested in, I wonder what's it going to cost them directing the tower? Would they be willing to invest the $170,000 in painting that tower?
Well, they wouldn't, because they wouldn't have anybody on it. We kind of, we broached out a little bit with AT&amp;T in terms of this, but it was out of my understanding at least that they weren't willing to spend that kind of money just to secure the location. I'm sorry, we did actually use that tower for some advertising. It was kind of internal advertising for something we were doing, I think it was the...
Recycle.
Recycle campaign, yeah. And so it may have some advertising value to some folks out there.
And we did it for the vets.
We did, right. Veterans, Marines, or moms, yeah.
Moms, saving moms.
Yeah. And they did that, both of those with wraps. But if you noticed, after the last one came down, the wrap came down, but if you look at the seal that's up there, it's kind of tarnished, it got rubbed or something.
Just a potential hole if you pour it right down.
I agree.
Thank you for this. Move on down to the roof.
I agree with Esther. I would just throw in a couple more comments. I know it's just a water tower. We have plenty of water towers in Moore. It's one that's been here a while. Moore's lost so much of our buildings, historical buildings. I just hate to see something else go. $170,000 is a lot, $45,000 is a lot for fireworks and tradition all over time and other things that go into that. So I think, I would appreciate if you could maybe look into the possibility of, I mean, it's right there on I-35, it would definitely be a good advertising space if there's anybody that would be interested in that if it were to be made available or just be made known that there is a possibility here. I remember years ago, I think they had talked about the old, the water tower on 27th Street when it was in need of paint, the city really didn't have a lot of funding. There were some Coca-Cola companies interested in the possibility of painting that, so.
We really never have for this one, for sure, but we've never put it out there to the advertising community or to the community that we would take proposals or ideas or whatever. We can do that if you all are interested in that, to see what might be out.
It kind of says we're, we do something like that, we're not talking as close as our mouth, but we'll allow the billboards in that area and to then determine that the billboard is inconsistent, I think. So I'd make a motion to approve negotiating a lease with Branch Communications and to take steps to remove that existing counter.
Okay, thank you. We have a second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions?
I would just say that as perhaps to the new billboards, I do recall that discussion, and there were some legal issues there that we weren't sure of, and we felt like those may be resolved in this report if Moore were to ever go well.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, second. Anybody else? No, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt, yes. Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
No.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 15 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve amendments of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held January 20th, 2015. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for 2014, 2015 in the amount of $699,363.80.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 16 is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held January 20th, 2015. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $206,021.66.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Any questions? No, call for it. It's a consent item.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item 17 is new business. Item A is citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? All right. Item B, items from the city council or trustees.
Main Street, just East of Train tracks, I think that's all we've been out there. They got them, you know?
I think so, I'll have to check on the people, sir.
Just let me know.
I almost heard a digger sound fell down, and I go back, did they get that back up?
I didn't notice. I didn't, I went and blew it down.
Anybody else?
Thank you to all the Boy Scouts for joining us this evening.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
I'll sit up front next time.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, any items from the city manager or trust manager?
I just mentioned a couple of things, Mayor. One is on construction that's ongoing at 19th and Broadway. That really is going pretty smooth compared to kind of what we thought it could be, even though we certainly realize and we appreciate the patience of our motory public out there. That is moving along, so I just wanted to say thank you to the folks who are avoiding that intersection as you can. But that's that. I just wanted to mention to the council members of the chamber's general membership luncheon is tomorrow, if any of you all didn't know or can come. I'm sure if you didn't make a reservation, I'm sure you can still probably drop by for that. Our park project, the Central Park project down here, is moving on very well. Construction is on schedule, best I know, and the building obviously is beginning to take shape, and people are seeing the size of that. But the aquatic center, the pool and all that, they're beginning to dig that, and you can begin to see a little bit of what things are going to begin to look like, so that's really nice going. I just wanted to mention something that we got word of, and I had emailed you all, but just to congratulate one of our local businesses, that is Warren Theaters and Mr. Warren. The theater over the weekend was the number-one theater in the United States for the movie American Sniper, which he certainly is proud of, but we very much so are as well. And just as an FYI, the number-two theater was his theater in Broken Arrow, but Moore is number-one, so. He wanted to say that. And Elizabeth and Jim mentioned earlier, but we did finally able to make our first drawdown request on the disaster recovery funds, Mayor, that we haven't actually got the cash in the bank yet, but we, Jim tells me we expect that any day now. So that process has finally started in terms of the paperwork side of it and the funding side of it, that we'll be able to say for sure that, yes, this is going to work. So that's really all I have at this point.
Item 18 is a journal.
Show move.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair. Jason.
Yes, sorry.
Melissa Hunt, yes. Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, remember, thank you for coming. We're next time.